All right, we're going to call to order the Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd. We're meeting in the Supervisor Hearing Room on Melody Lane. The order of deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and any item listed is open for discussion and possible action. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. Meeting presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached versions. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or remote conferencing. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak on an agenda item or during call to the public. Complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. So we'll begin with an invocation from District One, Ms. Anita Baca. Is Anita here? Ah, yes.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisors, Father God, as we gather for this Board of Supervisors meeting today with grateful hearts, we ask your discernment and wisdom in all of our decisions. Help us to serve our community with integrity and humility as stewards of your service seeking your will, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. All right, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, friends, one nation, united, God, in his light, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right. Do roll call now, District One. Brosbit is here. District Two.
Gomez is here.
And District Three, Antonori's here. All supervisors are present and in person. We'll begin with a call to the public. We have two speakers. First up is Mr. Alfred Kern. Mr. Kern.
Well, I'm sure everybody knows who I am by now. My name is Alfred Kern. I live at 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas, Arizona. And it's my understanding that you had a meeting about roads. And hopefully it was a favorable meeting. But like I said, like I said before, the roads don't need to be graded at the same rate that Cipriano every week and San Mateo every week. Let it go for a few months, but keep it up. And I don't know how or how much you decided about grading roads or if some roads are going to be dropped and some roads are going to be added. But it's to the point where our roads are just getting basically impassable. You know, we got washers, we got rocks, we got... And in time, I was going to lay into you too a little bit about, you know, you've attended or you've been in attendance each meeting that I've been in. I appreciated that. And like I said, we need to do something. You know, whether it's grade the roads once every six months or I don't know what else we could do. Anyway, that's all I have to say here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to...
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we did have a work session on just, Mr. Kern, on everything that goes on. Yes, he can hear me. But we do have a list of add and drops, and we are going to have a public hearing for the citizens to come and voice their concerns about the problems that they see with the road. And we haven't set a time yet for that, right?
Not yet, ma'am.
Okay, but that's coming up. And we'll make sure, I'll make sure, Mr. Kern, that you get the information when the public hearings so you can speak about the county roads and also just keep you updated with what's going on. We're, we just had a work session kind of introducing the whole concept schedules, what roads there are to add and drop. We haven't made any decisions, but when we do, I'll make sure you know.
All right, next up is Allison Morris. Okay, sorry about that. I lost my place for a second there. Ms. Morris, you got three minutes.
Thank you. Before my time starts, I'd just like to say that we don't have, I don't think there's any meetings for the Jail District Discussion in Portal, and there isn't a vote center there either, just FYI. Thank you, though, for allowing me to speak. My name is Allison Morris. I'm from Portal. I did listen to the two meetings, special meetings, last Wednesday. The first having to do with Supervisor's $300,000 claim to ACIP for Crosby's legal expenses and the second regarding the David Le Chance lawsuit. It was impossible to learn anything from either meeting as both were held in executive session, and there was no summary given at the end of each meeting. I did notice that ACIP's reply was posted later in the week, and for many good reasons, they refused to pay any part of the claim. The board's next move has not been disclosed to the public, although we taxpayers have already paid $20,000 for the attorney handling the issue. This, too, was not made public. I happened to find it in the list of demands. And since I've written my speech, I've learned that you will be going after former county attorney Brian McIntyre in a quote-unquote malpractice suit. So I guess you're hoping to get the $300,000 there. But on a different, but related topic, Supervisor Crosby has not properly disclosed the monies he received from Give Send Go's for his legal defense fund. His 2023 financial disclosure form filed January 5th, 2024, and posted on the county website indicates he received nothing in gifts, even though an article in the Sierra Vista Herald dated November 11th, 2023, indicated that he'd already raised $2,200. As I said, he declared zero gifts whatsoever on his 2023 statement. The following year, 2024, Crosby admitted that he'd received, quote, "approximately $10,000" from Give Send Go, but filed the document on December 27th of that year. The financial disclosure statement for 2024 was supposed to be filed between January 1st and January 31st of 2025, which allows one to precisely calculate all earnings from the previous year and not try to estimate the total. I wonder if Mr. Crosby has informed the board's attorney, Mick Rusing, or the Internal Revenue Service, for that matter, of this income in the form of gifts. His Give Send Go page was taken down earlier this year, but supporter James Schmidt posted a GoFundMe page for Crosby on June 1st of this year. Donations are not visible, but I imagine Mr. Crosby is still receiving crowdfunding support. Your constituents deserve to know what you've been up to and how you've been supported. And if this, we're going to be paying more money for the attorney, it would be nice for them to, for us to know that as well. I thank you for your time. We are waiting and watching. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. All right, so next we will move on to consent agenda items number one through three. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we accept consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? We need to speak to Masuko, no? Okay, so motion before the board is to approve consent agenda items one...
If you could just correct that a little bit. You said except, we would prefer approve.
Oh, approve.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent agenda items one through three. Stay in legal here.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve consent agenda items numbers one through three before the board. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes three zero. All right, next up, we have public hearings. All right. So I will now open the public hearing. All right, first up, Agenda Item Number Four. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve that Series 13 Farm Winery Liquor License Application submitted by Timothy Mayer Geis for Cactus Crew LLC at 10350 East Sunrise Drive, Pierce, Arizona.
Second. All right, Ms. Lohnheim, do you want to do brief discussion or explanation?
Sure. Chairman Antonori and members of the board, this item is for a Series 13 Farm Winery Liquor License Application submitted for Timothy Geis for Cactus Crew located in Pierce, Arizona. Mr. Geis has applied to be added as a member to their existing license, which was approved by the previous board January 23rd, 2024, and issued by the Department of Liquor License and Control on February 29th of 2024. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes are current, and the notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicants paid the processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
All right, any discussion?
No, sir.
All right, so the motion before the board is to approve the Series 13 Liquor License submitted by Timothy Mayer Geis for Cactus Crew LLC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Do I have to close this public hearing and open another one for each one? I do, I thought I did. Okay, okay, so we'll close that public hearing. And now we will open the next one. Can I get a motion for Agenda Item Number Five, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 25-15 to rezone tax parcel 404-02-027 from RU2 Rural District One Dwelling per two acres to RU4 Rural District One Dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Shane Harmon, Supervisor District Two.
Second.
You all right? You're going to lose Ms. Gomez here. All right, so any discussion? Let's go to Mr. Taylor for explanation. No, I got it.
Public hearing.
What'd you just do to us? All right, sorry, Mr. Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, this is a staff presentation for docket RC 2509. The applicant is Shane Harmon. The property is located on Long Beach Street in McNeil. This would be in Desert Sky subdivision. Proposed rezonance from RU2 to RU4. The property is currently undeveloped. The applicant proposes residential use using the County Zoner Builder Program. Property is located approximately 1.5 miles east of Highway 191 in Supervisor District Number Two. Desert Sky was platted back in the 1970s with five-acre lots and later rezoned to RU2. About eight parcels have been rezoned to RU4 over the years. Couple of drone images. This is viewing to the north and viewing to the east. Section 2.63 of the zoning regs identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. As is pretty common with down zones, nine factors are applicable to this application. The application complies with most applicable factors. The proposed development is compatible with the rural residential growth pattern of the area. This is a down zone that would reduce allowed residential density, and we did not receive any oppositions from neighboring property owners. Staff executed the public notification process between 16 and 23 July, mailing 10 notices and not receiving any responses. Based on the factors in favor, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero during its regular meeting on August 13th, 2025, and staff also recommends approval of this docket without special conditions. And Mr. Chair, board members, this concludes staff's presentation, docket RC 2509.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor, when you sent out the notices, is it just a letter by mail or is there any kind of like, they have to sign for it saying that they received it? Or is it just you put it in the mail and if you don't hear anything back, that's what you take? I mean...
Right, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gomez, the notices are sent regular mail. They're not sent certified.
Well, no, that's, that's it.
No questions? All right, all right, with that, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will entertain the motion or adopt the ordinance... Ah, and back up. The motion before the board is to adopt zoning ordinance 25-15 to rezone parcel 404-02-07 from RU2 Rural District One Dwelling per two acres to RU4 Rural District One Dwelling per four acres. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes three zero. We will close that public hearing. All right, now we will open the next public hearing. All right, next public hearing, can I get a motion for Agenda Item Number Six, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 25-16 to rezone tax parcel 408-11-009 from RU4 Rural District One Dwelling per four acres to General Business District pursuant to the application of Alfonso Munoz, Supervisor District Two.
Second.
All right, discussion will go to Mr. Taylor again for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. This is the staff presentation for docket RC 2510. This is an applicant-initiated rezoned property from RU4 to GB. Applicant again is Alfonso Munoz. Been requested amendment is from RU4 to GB. Property is currently undeveloped. There is no future user or identified use specifically, but obviously GB would allow a variety of commercial uses. Property is located along Highway 80, about two miles west of the city of Douglas in Supervisor District Number Two. Property is approximately 26 and a half undeveloped acres, adjacent to other undeveloped parcels also zoned RU4. There is GB zoning approximately one quarter mile to the east and one quarter mile to the west along the north side of Highway 88.
Is this next to the DMV?
No, it's further.
Further west?
Correct. It's further west, west of Plantation.
West of Plantation. Is that in that area where that big junkyard is on Highway 80? Is it, would it be east or west of that?
Supervisor Gomez, this would be east of that property.
That would be east of the property. And so greater, general business is just, it could be a truck stop, it could be a convenience store, it could be anything like that?
Supervisor Gomez, predominantly the GB district would allow a host of heavy commercial as well as retail or service-related commercial uses. Correct.
All right, thank you.
Continue, sir.
Again, getting back to the zone drone images, this would be viewing to the south and viewing to the east. Section 2.63 of the zoning regs identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning applications. 14 factors are applicable to this down zone. The applicant did not supply a concept plan since there is no identified user at this time.
So hang on, let me ask clarification. So he didn't submit one because he doesn't know what he's going to do with the property or he didn't submit one because he didn't submit one?
Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. We do require that on the zoning application.
Yeah.
We would ask for an adequate site plan or concept plan to understand what the future development's going to look like. But at this time, the applicant does not, has not identified a future use or a future user of the property, and so consequently doesn't have a concept plan for us.
So, so would he have to come back again when he decides what he wants to put on that?
Mr. Chair, no, it would not have to come back to the board. It would all be reviewed during the permitting process.
During the permitting process.
So, so we don't have any idea what he would use the property for? I mean, I guess we're just allowing him to decide what he wants to do? Would you say that?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gomez. The board is actually not taking action on any specific project with the rezonance.
Right.
It's just, is the GB zoning district appropriate for this location?
And he'll have to get the appropriate permits if he's going to build something, and it'll have to be in compliance with the zoning in order to get the permits. So that'll be the...
That's when he comes back.
That's when the applicant, at the time they've identified a use and they're ready to move forward with developing the property, they would submit a construction documents to the county, and we would, we would validate that against all the applicable regulations. Zoning is obviously flood plain, and all the site development standards of the GB district would be, as well as other things like lighting, landscaping.
And so I'm just, I'm just curious. The guy's going through the process, paying the fees to rezone, and he, he's going to put all this into this property, but he doesn't know what he's going to do with this property. Is it because he's going to resell it? Is he going to wait for the port to get built?
Well, it could be a lot of that, let me get ready, see if this thing will ever happen, you know, kind of...
I mean, it's just, it's just kind of interesting to me that, that somebody would come in, request to be rezoned without knowing why he wants to get rezoned.
I think there's still a lot of, you know, question about whether this is going to happen because you're groundbreaking on Friday for a building with a road that doesn't even exist to go nowhere. And on the other side, you don't know what's going to happen. So I think it's just a preparation in case this thing actually happens.
I got it.
He's ready.
All right, it just seems kind of weird that you go through all that trouble without knowing what he wants, what he wants to do.
This whole thing is...
Yeah, I got you. All right, thanks, Mr. Taylor. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chair, just this application does comply with the factors. Commercial uses are appropriate along major arteries, highways, and freeways. And we consider commercial uses to be, again, those retailer service-related commercial, maybe some heavy commercial or light industrial uses as well as like multifamily. There are no adjacent residential uses to this property, and staff did not receive any opposition. We did, the applicant did mail out the letters as required. Staff published notice and sent out the letters as required. We mailed six notices. We received one inquiry, but no responses in opposition or in favor. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this docket without special conditions, seven to zero during its regular meeting on August 13th of 2025, and staff is also supporting this application without special conditions.
My question...
Go ahead.
Sure. So, so when you put it in, publish it in the paper, Sierra Vista is the only paper you publish in, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And nobody in Doug's reads Sierra Vista Herald, I hate to say it, but... So I'm just wondering, down the road, if there's not some way we need to think about notifying people of what's going to be happening with this whole port of entry? Because I know they don't, they're not reading the paper on it. So maybe we can have a discussion later on on just maybe making sure. I mean, you guys don't knock on doors, you just don't hand deliver it, you just send it by regular post, right?
That's correct. And the publication mode has changed before. Typically, that's probably the least effective.
But it's statutory that you publish in the paper Record for the County, which is in this case, the Sierra Vista Herald. So he's just following state law.
Yeah, but I was saying that that's like really problematic. We really want people to know what's happening in there, you know, especially people who have been living out in that area for a long time. We might have to do an additional step just to make sure that they're included and they understand what's going on, because I think that's going to be a problem for us going down the road with this port of entry.
Got to get more people reading the newspaper.
Well, I don't know about that, but I do know maybe we just need to think of something, and maybe it's, I don't know, let's brainstorm later about that. And the other thing is that down the road, can you, like when it, I'm just wondering if I should have called, but seven to zero, you had two missing, I guess, commissioners. And I was just wondering what District Two Commissioners voted for it or against it? It's unclear.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gomez, my recollection on this meeting was that we did have two commissioners absent, one from District Two and one from District Three. Obviously, the other District Two Commissioners were in spirit.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, no further discussion.
District One was fully represented.
All right.
From the city.
The motion before the board is to adopt zoning ordinance 25-16 to rezone tax parcel 408-11-009 from RU4, one dwelling per four acres to General Business. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Look forward to seeing what he builds there. All right, we will close that public hearing, and now we will reopen the next public hearing. Can I get a motion for Agenda Item Number Seven?
I move to adopt zoning ordinance 25-17 to rezone tax parcel 117-02-284B from SR-43, Single Household Residential District, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet, to SR-174, Single Household Residential District, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Luis Manuela, Supervisor District Three.
Second. All right, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. This is the staff presentation for docket RC 2511. An applicant initiated request to downzone property from SR-43 to SR-174. Property is developed with residential uses and will continue residential in nature. Property is located at 751 Quail Pass, Ryan and Sun sites number two, of which the board has seen many downsons of property in the past. Property is located within Supervisor District Number Three, approximately four miles west of Highway 191. Again, this is located within Sun sites, which is an antiquated subdivision that goes back to the 1960s. And again, we've seen many requests to downzone property now, either SR-174 or RU4. Couple of drone images. This would be viewing to the south, to the southeast. Section 2.63 of the zoning regs identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. And as with most down zones, there are nine applicable factors for this down zone. The request is complicable with the applicable factors. It's compatible, the proposed use is compatible with the rural residential growth pattern. The down zone reduces allowed residential density. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor, other than we did receive two, just to touch on very quickly, 16 to 23, we did notice this, this docket, we did mail 26 notices. We received one response in favor and two responses in opposition. One of the oppositions did not identify a cause or reason as to why. Another response and opposition was that they felt that this would impact their ability to develop their single acre lot, which is zoned SR-43, which is not the case. We're seeing an evolving development pattern. Obviously, you're never going to see one acre lot development out there. These properties are going to continue to be combined, downzoned, and they're going to be multi-acre parcels. And this map shows the location of the two, or an opposition, as well as the one in favor. Based on the factors in favor, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval without special conditions during its regular meeting on August 13th, 2025. Staff also recommends approval of this docket without special conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, it's going to be an ongoing thing out there. All right, so any discussion, any other questions?
No, sir.
All right, the motion before the board is to approve, adopt zoning ordinance 25-17 to rezone tax parcel 11702284B from SR-43, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet, to SR-174, one dwelling per four acres. All those in favor say aye.
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 Right, we have three zero. All right, now we will close that public hearing, and now we will reopen the next public hearing. Can I get a motion for Agenda Item Number Eight, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 25-18 to amend Articles 2.03, Definitions 2.48, Use Specific Standards, and various zoning district sections of the zoning regulations to update terminology and provisions related to accessory living quarters.
Second. I'll second it. Okay, I got it. So that's, that's fine. All right, so with that, we'll go to discussion. We'll go to Ms. McGoughlin for an explanation.
Good morning. This is docket R 2503. It's a staff-initiated text amendment to the zoning regulations specifically impacted, impacting the regulation of accessory dwellings in Cochise County. Accessory dwelling units are a living unit on the same parcel as another single-family dwelling. The accessory is smaller and must include sleeping quarters and a bathroom. Broadly speaking, this amendment will expand flexibility, increase housing capacity, and bring our code into alignment with Arizona's recent ADU legislation, which is now state law, ARS 118101. This became law on May 23rd, 2025, following the passage of House Bill 2928. The intent of House Bill 2928 was to establish a consistent statewide framework for county permitting of accessory dwelling units. On this slide and the next, I list specific changes to our zoning regs. Two of the most important things to note relate to applicability. Accessory dwellings will be permitted on any lot where a single-family dwelling is permitted. So this will impact accessory dwelling allowances in seven of our zoning districts. On each lot, in addition to a single-family home, one attached and one detached ADU will be permitted. This increases by one if the parcel is at least an acre in size. In terms of development standards, the ADU can be up to 75% of the size of the principal structure or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. ADUs must have no less than a five-foot setback from all property lines. Just to reiterate, these are the maximum limits. If it's one attached, it is one attached and one detached accessory dwelling. If the property is one acre or greater, it's, we would allow one attached and two detached accessory dwellings. If it's one acre or 100 acres, that's the same limit. That's the absolute cap. We would allow multiple mailboxes, park model RVs, if the property is at least three acres and zoned RU4 SR SM 174. We will remove the rental restriction and make a couple of process changes. A use deviation, for example, commercial and ADU would... Uh, commercial and ADU would require, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission approval. As it is currently, deviation from site development standards would go to our Board of Adjustments. This is most often the case where an applicant wants to exceed the overall size cap. So if they want to do an eleven hundred square foot accessory dwelling. This amendment was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August thirteenth. We had one member of the public speak in favor of the amendment. The commission provided a recommendation of approval six to one. Uh, just a reminder, this is a public hearing, um, and I am the applicant, so I'm available for any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. We do have one public speaker. Uh, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Any questions for Ms. McGoughlin on what she just said?
So.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, somewhere, I think you said that this was according to a new state law. Is that correct? Uh, so when I'm looking at this page says, uh, I guess I'm, I'm looking for, uh, like, what happens if, if we don't pass it? So what would happen if we don't pass it?
It states within the bill, if a county fails to adopt development regulations as required by the section on or before January first, two thousand and twenty six. Accessory dwelling units shall be allowed on all lots or, um, or parcels zoned for residential use in the county without limits.
Okay.
So that means we would not have the ability locally to, to regulate accessory dwellings.
Okay. Uh, and, and I, I noticed, uh, it, I, I, I'll, I'll take my turn, but I noticed that I have my chair of the C and Z.
She's, okay, going to be speaking. So any, any other?
Well, in other words, so if we don't agree to what the state has already decided we should agree, then we have no say in it? Where if we do agree to agree to what they've made us agree, then we have somewhat of a say?
So supporting this amendment is the proactive protective path.
Yeah.
It allows the county to maintain its zoning authority in this matter. Keep development orderly and still comply with state law.
So that's a yes to.
The voting yes is not conceding any power. It's retaining as much local control as the law allows.
How much control have they taken?
Uh, well, they, they, we've increased the allowable size from fifty percent to seventy five percent and also the number of allowable units.
Okay.
So let's, a little history lesson here. This is mainly due to Pima Maricopa County housing prices. There were significant increases in the cost of housing, which made affordable housing very difficult to find. So to accommodate those counties, the legislature decided to create less expensive housing in those heavily populated counties to help reduce housing prices or the accessibility to housing with a lower cost. So they thought the ability to add in addition to the house or build a casita that you can rent out or lease at, at a, a lower rent would help solve the housing crisis, uh, in, in those two counties. We are the unfortunate benefactors of that policy. It should have been restricted to counties with populations above two hundred and fifty thousand people. Would have probably been the appropriate way to deal with that rather than imposing it on everybody, but here we are, short of getting our esteemed legislators to amend it, to restrict it to counties with populations of two hundred and fifty thousand or more, we are stuck holding this bill until such time as it is amended.
So this allows them to be able also to put like a, uh, what do they call it, five wheeler in their, their property? Cause I've seen that all over Tucson and Maricopa. No, it doesn't.
No, that one.
Okay, it's that one that allows it. Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's get Ms. DePue up here to, um, respond, our esteemed Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Speaking into the wind one last time. Clarence Thomas said we have an inversion of liberties. I think this applies. Accessory dwelling unit revisions were sold by lobbyists as affordable housing for the homeless and middle income folks. It's baloney. It benefits landlords who have money to invest in backyard casitas. The parcel can't be divided and sold, only rented. Property taxes will increase, making the congested parcel even less affordable in the future. Development code, uh, guardrails are few, septic tanks, that's it. With effluent as a restrictive tool, we are up that creek. Short term rentals are not controlled locally. The state took away years, state took that away years ago. This is the mission creep of socialist fifteen minute cities. And where the frogs in the pot, oblivious to the trouble these rules can bring. The term single family no longer means one family. Neighborhoods will deteriorate. Imagine a house on an acre of land in a spacious subdivision and attached to garage apartment appears. The cars now go in the street. Two more little buildings are allowed. Suddenly, a single acre is home to four families. Improvements to provide additional driveways are not required. My neighbors now sport eight cars, four dogs, fifteen people, three cats, four mailboxes, four trash cans and five delivery trucks every day to four different addresses, all only five feet from my property line. Neighborhood watches out the window. Who knows who belongs over there and who doesn't? On three or more acres, owners can pull in three tiny homes. These are nothing more than miniature mobile homes. And if I were living in a Cochise County subdivision, SR one seventy four. After just completing the effort to preserve site built requirements, I would be livid. This statute was wrapped in the promise of eliminating red tape, providing affordable housing and property rights unleashed. It's not genuine freedom, though, if it destroys the tranquility of the neighborhood. We live in a community and community governments handle those things best, not states. On the P and Z, nine volunteers look at applications for something new in a neighborhood. We carefully weigh that application alongside the existing expectations of the residents. The state has fired us.
Thank you, Mr. DePue. Very succinctly said. So, Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, I would add that, uh, she's actually not a member of the public, and so she's not restricted three minutes, although she's very, very courteous and succinct, as you pointed out. You have further comment, Mr. Chair?
I, I agree with what she just said. I mean, I think, uh, the legislature created a problem by trying to solve a problem, which having been a former member of the legislature, we do that all the time.
What should we do?
Well, I think, uh, well, we're going to have to, well, I can't say until we vote, but I, I'm looking for my, 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 my perspective is where we have to, uh, comply. Or we're going to lose the authority altogether to regulate on those properties, which is a problem, but clearly, since the three of us know our three legislators very well, and you actually have additional legislators in your district, so there's six of them that we can go talk to about fixing this at a future date and having this legislation amended, which they can do. The, the other option is to put it on the ballot and go get two hundred and fifty thousand signatures from people to basically make it a ballot referendum.
It, uh, did I understand that the option is unlimited accessory dwelling units?
If we don't approve.
If without.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That doesn't sound good.
No, that's not very good. That is, that is, so, but, but I, I, again, we have the ability through the permitting process for approving some of these, right? There's a, there's, they have to be adequately supported with a septic tank. They have to have adequate access and driveways and there's, there's ways that planning and zoning or you guys can control that, right? We're gonna have, we're gonna have to figure, you want to come back up if you want to add, add, so we could, uh.
Not driveways, aren't they prohibited, Kristy? We can't force more driveways. That's how it read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what, what, so you, so you can build two accessory dwellings on a three acre parcel detached from the house, but you don't have to put in, or three? But you don't have to put in a driveway to those? It's just one driveway supports them all?
Correct.
Really?
Our streets become unimaginable.
Parking lots.
Yeah, parking lots.
Ah, okay, all right.
Just ill conceived.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I get, I get what they were trying to do, because I saw it, I was reading, you know, in the various information journals, whether you call them newspapers or blogs or tweets or whatever, the issue of what is basically PPP for blank or planning. Uh, that has resulted in a dramatic increase in, in housing prices up there. And nobody can find any place to live unless you want to pay, you know, five thousand dollar a month mortgage or thirty five hundred dollars a month in rent. And that was the problem they were, were dealing with. And instead of expanding the ability to build housing, of course, they restricted the ability to build housing, which drove housing prices even further up, up, and then made it even more difficult to find a house in those two counties. So that's why they did not, because it is easy to do, uh, to set a population threshold. Why they did not set a population threshold, threshold escapes me. I don't understand why. They didn't restrict it to, I, I, I mean, you could probably just did populations with a million or more, because now we have two counties with a population over a million. They could have restricted it to the counties with a population of a million more, lines, it's just not one. Uh, under the, the single subject, uh, target rule of the legislature. I don't know. So I guess getting with our legislature and telling them, ask them to amend this, to restrict it to high population counties. Let them guys deal with the problem that they created, not us. That would probably be at least, I think, an amicable solution. But for now, we are stuck with what we are stuck with. It's either some control or no control. That is the question. So with that, any additional discussion or questions for our wonderful Development Services Director?
We have until when?
January first.
January first. You know me, I had to.
Push the envelope?
Yes, I would like to, I don't know, just not jump through the hoop.
I got you.
Too, but.
I got you. Any, any other comments, Mr. Crosby? All right, so with that, back to the original, before the board, uh, we have the question to adopt zoning ordinance twenty five eighteen to amend Articles two point zero three definitions and two point four eight, uh, use septic standards and various zoning district sanctions or sections of the zoning regulation to update terminology and provisions related accessory living quarters as defined and directed by state statute. I added that last part, but that's exactly what we're doing here. I want to make sure that we are doing this to comply. And again, it's the some control versus no control question. So with that,
I would, uh, thank Ms. DePue and Ms. McGoughlin and Mr. Taylor for their diligence.
All right, so that, you heard the motion before the board. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a three, three zero. It's like you could tell we, we just witnessed the arm twisting of Ms. Gomez, then three of us actually arm twisted. We had no choice, obviously, in this case, but I will definitely talk to my legislators about it.
Yeah, I will too.
So, all right, thank you, Ms. McGoughlin. All right, so we will close that public hearing. All right, and next we'll go to the next public hearing. Can I get a motion for agenda item number nine, please?
I move to adopt zoning ordinance twenty five dash eighteen.
Excuse me. We have to first have a motion to remove it from the table.
Oh, that's right. I'm, I'm sorry. This is the special one. I, I wasn't paying attention. Okay, so can I get a motion to remove the previous tabled item from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move we untable item number nine, which was tabled July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll second it. All right, so the motion before the board is to remove from the table agenda item number nine, which was tabled on July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. All those in favor of removing it from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is now removed from the table. Now we have, let me get this right. So we have to do a motion to remove it. No, no, what's the next one?
So you already have the motion standing from the July meeting, so now we can move to discussion, correct, Paul? Yes.
So what, one more time?
The motion to approve was already standing from the July twenty second meeting, so now it's off the table and you can move to discussion of that item.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's get a motion to discuss, well, let's just move it and then we'll have discussion. So let's.
Mr. Chair, I move we discuss item, uh, that we just took off the table. July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, at the regular Board of Supervisors meeting, adopt zoning ordinance twenty five dash thirteen to rezone tax parcel four zero eight dash thirty four dash zero zero five C from RU four, rural district, one dwelling per four acres to LI Light Industry District pursuant to the application of Tactical Holdings LLC, Supervisor District Two.
Second.
All right, so now discussion, Mr. Taylor, go explain this, please.
Mr. Chair and Board members, the applicant has asked for this application to be withdrawn and the board take no action.
Ah, oh, so then we just basically remove it from the agenda, or, right? Just do a motion to remove it? If we're not taking any action? Or do we just not take, because we moved.
You can just remove it from the agenda at this point, yes.
Yeah, and that would be my purview, right? Right, so on the purview of the chair, I'm removing agenda item number nine from the agenda, right?
Could accept the withdrawal.
Or we could, and, well, yeah, same, same scene. It's being removed. All right, so there it is. No action has been taken because we removed it from the agenda. All right, uh, and we will now close that public hearing. Okay, now we will get back to the regular board meeting. Uh, we have two agenda items here. Um, can I, I will, I will move these. So I move we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three Wilcox Transit Program Support in the amount of seventy five hundred.
Second.
Got a second. All right, discussion. Uh, this is for, the town of Wilcox runs a rural bus service that covers a lot of northern Cochise County, including Bowie, Sansamo, and Pierce, Sun sites and the surrounding area that allows them to bring folks that do not necessarily have transportation into Wilcox for various things like shopping, Safeway or other things, and then returning them, uh, back to their home. The city pays a sizable portion of this. They're asking us or me to chip in because it does service a lot of the other smaller communities within my district that the city of Wilcox obviously has not incorporated. So they're asking for support of that bus service. So I am offering seventy five hundred dollars to the city of Wilco- Cox to augment that funding. That is a justification. Any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, so that's pretty simple. So the motion before the board is to approve Community Enhancement Funds expenditures for District Three, the Wilcox Transit Program Support in the amount of seventy five hundred. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes three zero. Oh, okay. All right, next up, uh, I'll, I'll move this one as well. Uh, I move we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three for the Mescal J six fire district to purchase firefighting nozzles and hose in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, all right, discussion on this. Again, um, we, we all understand the challenges with rural, uh, fire districts and in particular areas that have a very low tax base, which Mescal does, as we know there are quite a few within the county. Um, so in order to provide public safety, uh, out in a very rural portion of the county, sometimes these fire districts need additional support. Uh, the fire chief came to me and, and showed me some of the other challenges besides this that he's dealing with out there, and he was hoping that we could cover the cost of hoses and nozzles so that he could use other funds, uh, for fixing up buildings and a few other things that he needs to do there. So I said I'd be more than happy to um, provide that additional funding for public safety out in Mescal. So that's why, uh, three thousand dollars is being provided to them for that purpose. Any questions? None. All right, so the motion before the board is to approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Three from Mescal J six Fire District to purchase firefighting nozzles and hoses in the amount of three thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes three zero. All right, agenda item number twelve.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Resolution twenty five dash twenty seven, accepting funds under the State of Arizona General Appropriations Act, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, also known as House Bill twenty eight ninety seven for the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to purchase pepper, pepper ball and pepper ball weapons in the amount of fifty six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a speaker for this, um, agenda item number twelve, Ms. Tricia Jaredette. Are you online, Ms. Jaredette?
I am, Supervisor.
Yes, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, my, my question about this resolution and about the funding. I'm curious about the terms and conditions of the enabling legislation. Um, I, I speculate that these weapons are part of in immigration enforcement work, probably. But are they also available to the sheriff's office to be used on US citizens if needed?
Is that it?
Sorry, that's it.
All right, we may be get an answer to that question. All right, we may get an answer to that question. We'll see. Can we get Commander Watkins, if you would like to respond? I got a couple of questions for you too, because I got curiosity myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, thank you for having me. Robert Watkins from the Sheriff's Office. These are absolutely have no nexus to immigration. The Cochise County Sheriff's Office does not employ any of our lethal or less lethal munitions. But let me say it like this, the status of someone's immigration status has nowhere on our application.
It's real, yeah. I got a question for you. Are these Burna's, Burna pistols?
No, they are not, sir.
It's a different company?
Yes.
I don't have a conflict then, because I consulted for these guys a couple of years back when they were looking for venture capital funds. They're a pistol that shoots a very high concentration desiccated pepper, cayenne pepper.
Mr. Chair, these are very similar, but we've had these deployed in the field for probably eight years.
Oh, they're older?
Yes, sir. If you imagine a
Are they, are they the orange ones?
They, they're red. They have a very variation of munitions that can be shot from it. But if you picture a paintball gun
Yeah.
with a hopper device, they're very, very effective. And they also carry like glass breaking rounds. Like if we needed to penetrate into someone's automobile, if we had like a barricaded suspect in there, you could put glass breaking rounds in that essentially a pepper ball, I'm sorry, a paintball device, it would break out the rounds, and then you can shoot these OC balls into the, to the cabin or to the house. It is extremely effective. It's one of our most effective less lethal tools.
I was talking to Ms. Gilman about the sort of phone. They are very, very effective. Even so much the effect occurs after you put them in the back of the police car and you drive them.
Gotta air them out.
Yeah, they, they, they are very, very effective.
That is true.
Yeah. Yeah. So they're, okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah, sure.
What are they used for?
Mr. Chair, Madam Supervisor, they're used for, they fall within our use of force continuum. So what it would have, have an effect on is like barricaded suspects, somebody that is actively aggressive, some things like that where we can use time and space to deescalate an event. Tasers are rare, tasers not as effective.
And they're short range.
Yes. Well, I mean, within 25 to 30 yards, Mr. Chair, but they're much more effective. They're one of the most effective less lethal munitions we have.
Versus pumping them full of
Bullets.
Bullets. Yeah. So it's a nicer way to deal with somebody. So, any other questions for the commander?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So the motion before the board is to approve Resolution 2527, accepting funding under State of Arizona Attorney General, oh, excuse me, Arizona General Appropriations Act of 2425, also known as House Bill 2897, in the amount of $56,600. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes three two zero. All right. All right. Next up, can I get number 13 moved, please?
I prove, I move to approve Attorney General FY 2026 Victims Rights Program Award Agreement A dot G pound, or what is that, pound?
Yeah.
2026-043 in the amount of $11,500.
Second. All right. Any discussion? None. All right. So the motion before the board is to approve AG FY 26 Victims Rights Program Award Agreement, AG Number 2026-043 in the amount of $11,500. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three zero. All right, next up, item number 14, please.
I move to consider removal of Commissioner Young from the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and possible action.
Second. All right, discussion. Let's go to Ms. McGough for an explanation.
Members of the board, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a nine-member advisory body established by the board to guide the county's growth and development. Its bylaws require members attend to meetings regularly, monthly, and specifically state that missing more than three regular meetings in a 12-month period constitute neglect of duty. Commissioner Albert Young has missed five regular meetings over the past 12 months. In accordance with the bylaws, I'm acting on behalf of the commission to notify you on this matter. Proper notice of today's hearing was provided to Commissioner Young on August 15 via letter and email. Consistent attendance is critical to the commission to fulfill the advisory role effectively, and today's decision will ensure the integrity and accountability of the body moving forward. I want to clarify today's proceedings regarding Commissioner Young as a hearing, but not a public hearing. Commissioner Young has the option to be present and may respond to concerns raised or provide mitigating information. This is an action item for the board, meaning that after a hearing from him, if he chooses to speak, the board will deliberate and make a formal decision on whether his absences constitute neglect of duty and warrant removal from the Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the bylaws.
I'd just like to make a statement since it's District Two. I had heard that, that former Supervisor English had told him he didn't have to appear, but he hasn't appeared in two years. He's done it by Zoom. I think that this, having attended the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, it's, it's very important to see the people who are talking about the issues that impact them. So I find it amazing, having known the requirements, that it was one time a month that you would to appear here in person that he didn't in two years is alarming. And so, once we vote on his being removed, then he has how long to respond? Or is it over? Okay, perfect. Okay.
All right. So is he here? I don't, I don't, I don't see him here. So, so I guess he
He doesn't care enough.
So, all right. So with that, do we need to do a hearing if he's in present? I mean, he's in violation of the bylaws. The board can entertain a motion to remove him, right? All right. So do you want to
Yes.
entertain that motion?
I want to entertain the motion
Okay.
to remove Mr. Young from the Planning and Zoning Commission Board.
Second. All right. So the motion before, any discussion? All right, the motion before the board is to remove Commissioner Young from the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, three zero. Mr. Young has been removed, and I guess you will go through the process of filling that vacancy.
Yes.
All right. All right. So with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 15. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Contract 25-29 IDT-01 with Preventronics for DSX Access Control System for new facilities building in the amount of $15,660.10 with a countywide maintenance of all systems as needed for a five-year term with an option of five additional years.
Second.
All right, is Mr. Gordon here? Hey, Arius. Just a real quick, brief explanation, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Norrie, Supervisors Gomez and Crosby. I'm Alan Gordon, IT Director. Item 15, request approval of Contract 25-29-ITD-01 for the amount of $15,660.10 with Preventronics to add access control to new facilities building and provide ongoing maintenance for both that system and our current system over the period of five years, with the options of renewing for an additional five years. This would be to add door controls, you know, swipe access to the new building, and then also, you know, establish a contract with Preventronics to allow us to get maintenance and, you know, ongoing support for this, for both that system and the one that we have installed already.
Okay. So it's just for the facilities building, the new, the new buildings?
Yeah, so the
Just one, it's one building?
One building, for the new parts of it, yeah. And then this will also kind of establish a contract with them so that we can get maintenance on all, you know, the buildings for the entire county.
So but it's not warranted for five years. It's just that they get to fix it for five years?
Correct. There is a warranty period on there.
There is?
Yeah.
There is a warranty, okay.
I don't, I don't think it's five years, but it's warranty based on
All right. So you got a warranty, and then after that, it's on call?
Basically, yeah.
And then it's fee for service?
Yeah.
They charge you for what it is? Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure. All right. I got no more questions. You guys good?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. So the motion before the board is to approve Contract 2529 ITD-01 with Preventronics for DSX Access Controls for the new facilities building in the amount of $15,660.10. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes three zero. All right, next up, 16. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Grant G-202411-06263 from the National Environmental Health Association, NEHA-US Food and Drug Administration, FDA Retail Flexible Funding Model, RFFM, Grant Program for Work on Standards 2349 and Training with the Cochise Health and Social Services Environmental Health Division in the amount of $21,500, effective April 1, 2025 through March 31, 2026.
Second. Do you need any discussion? Any discussion?
Sure.
What's it for? Ms. Moreno, is she here? If you can come up and give us a brief explanation, we appreciate it.
Good morning, Chair and Sonori, Supervisor Crosby and Supervisor Guzman. We are asking for you to approve this grant awarded by National Environmental Health Association and Food and Drug Administration to pay for the standards, working on standards 239, 234 and 9 and training. It contributes to the continued education to keep our registered sanitaryian licenses up to date.
It just funds the training to keep them
To keep you guys certified?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Yep. Any other questions?
No, sir.
None. All right. So the motion before the board is to approve the Grant G-202411-06263 from the National Environmental Health Association in the amount of $21,500. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three two zero. All right. Next page. Um, state and federal legislation, I got nothing this week.
We talked extensively about the zoning regulations.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, we'll have to, you know, is that something, maybe we could also add to the CSA event in October, and we can bring it up there.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to talk to Craig Sullivan about that.
All right, we will do that. We also put that on our legislative initiative agenda for, for that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Crosby, for that reminder. Appreciate that. Any other, any other state or federal stuff? Nothing there? So then we will go to Ms. Gilman for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the, in the interest of time, I will skip my report today. I've met with each of you individually, and I'll give you some updates on your districts that I have on your individual meetings.
Okay. All right. Back to us, District One, Mr. Crosby, getting
Yes, thank you, sir.
current events. Ms. Gomez?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot to say. Okay. So on Thursday, I went to Nacosari to meet with the mayors from Sonora, basically to show that the county is very involved in this new port of entry. I was incredibly received. We also had the US consulate from Nogales there, and also the mayor of Douglas. It was incredible, good networking. We met with Grupo Mexico, which is the equivalent of Freeport-Mackay. So I talked to them about trying to be on the Port of Authority Board. So I thought it, I think it was really important in reaching out to the Sonoran mayors and never been done before by the county. So it was a really definitely good step. There were a lot of issues in taking a county car, though, into Mexico. And I guess it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. I'll have to talk to you all about that. But it ended up being that we caused a little bit of an international scene because the National Guard, who's in charge of immigration, felt the paperwork and the fact that no, no expiration date on the tag was a problem, because they don't understand, they don't have counties. So we were kind of trying to figure out what to do, and Chief of Police went by, then it got out that they weren't letting the mayor and the county supervisor in. So her seal called, they kind of named, so it became an international incident for about 10 minutes. And the, what we did is we ended up riding with the mayor of Awaprieta and the Chief of Police of Awaprieta, who used, in their town, let me tell you, they had a nice escalator in the Little County sedan car, who was not unmarked, by the way, which probably was good because they had a big Cochise County seal. So we rode with them down to Nacosari, which was a much better thing to do. But it was really, really a good event, and I'd like to do an economic roundtable either in December or January, inviting, you know, Grupo Mexico, the Cattlemen and all that, to an economic table, in which we could talk about an economic strategic plan for the port. And the US consulate, she thought that that was what she wanted to do also. So just FYI, that's what we're
It's good to hear that our neighbors to the South have such stringent
Yes.
enforcement of their immigration and import, import laws
And
to, to prevent unauthorized import of vehicles and illegal Americans from entering Mexico.
Of taking over the car by the federales, who then might put the car up for, in a kidnapped position, and we would have to pay ransom. So, there we go.
There we go.
The other thing I want to talk about is this Friday is the port, the groundbreaking of the port of entry. I understand that Hobbs has agreed to come. Gallego is going to be there. So is possibly, well, Kelly will definitely be there. I think Gallego might be still.
I'm coming too.
And you guys are coming?
I'm coming.
All right.
Are you going too?
Yes.
All right. Three of us will be there.
And it's, it's groundbreaking of a building that has no road to nowhere, and has nothing across, and doesn't have pipes for the infrastructure. So trying to figure out how this all came about is very complex to me, because I don't know how you don't build the road first, and then the building, or road, and then the infrastructure with the pipes that are going to deliver water, sewer, and internet, and then build the building. But it is what it is.
If I were a governor up for reelection, I would find a way to exploit that opportunity.
I would think I would build a road.
Given to me, but anyways.
So we'll have those two senators and the governor there
Yeah.
to make the plea for why we can't get 40 million for the road and 24 million for the pipes. So you, I'd love it if you guys would
Oh, yeah.
definitely help me in getting that message across. And, and then the pick game is that Friday, in which I think Kelly is staying. I don't know who else is staying, but that's 156th game of Douglas, hopefully beating Bisbee and keeping the pick. Sorry, Bisbeeites. But it is the longest traditional competitive game in the United States. So we're historical right there. The other thing I wanted to talk about was just for events coming up, just everyone to know about the 96 Annual Haldorado Days will be in October 17 through 19. And, let's see, in Bisbee, September 26, 27, to 28, there's the Bisbee Blues Bluegrass Country Pub Crawl. So there's a lot to do on that, because that is also the weekend of the county fair, 101st County Fair. I have this bluegrass, bluegrass music.
What about Mariachi's?
That's in, that's, I think, actually later in October.
Oh, I thought it was 13.
No, no, I think that's October.
Okay.
So that's it. Thank you very much.
Like I mentioned, we got the jail district meetings coming up today and tomorrow. Today in El Frida, starting at six. I would say where it's at, but they confiscated my county phone for a public records request, so I can't look up the actual locations. Where, where is this at?
Community.
In, in El Frida?
Yeah.
Frida, High School.
Community Center. Community Center, which is by the high school, I think, right? Or is it, do we have an address?
It's by the library.
By the library.
All right, all right. And then in Pierce Sunsite at the Pierce Community Center tomorrow.
On Wednesday?
Yep, tomorrow, tomorrow. So those are, those are the two big events. I had a couple of things, but like I said, they, IT took my phone, because somebody asked for my text messages or something from my public phone. So they're pulling out my text messages now. So I'll get my phone back, hopefully before I leave this afternoon.
Ten minutes of a past Supervisor's meeting, but had to be done.
Oh, that's fine.
That was painful.
It's fine.
Wasn't there.
All right. So with that, any last minute discussions? All right, next meeting will be, oh, wow, September 11, 10 a.m.? That's a ways off. So
You mean September 11?
Yeah. What are you guys going to be doing for the next week without us?
That's what happens when I go on vacation.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, we don't have any, we've been doing two meetings, three meetings a week, and now we're not going to do anything until
I think more than that.
September 11?
That's our agenda preview for the September 16 meeting.
Wow. I don't know what to do. I don't, you can't call for more hearings or public meetings or nothing. Just have to be on my own going out there?
All right, we have to go meet with our constituents and find out what's going on in the rest of the county. All right. So with that, the next meeting will be September 11 for our work session for reviewing the agenda for the following week's regular meeting. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.